Okay, so, welcome to Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting for June 29, 2023. Please rise and say the pledge.
The pledge is to comply with the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm sorry? Okay, great. Thanks. All right, so, first order of business is the warrants that were signed. Can we get a report on those?
Make a motion to approve the warrants. FY 2324 AP $79,446.57. FY 2324 payroll $193,277.53. FY 2324 withholding $88,879.33. FY 2325 accounts payable $126,798.48. FY 2325 payroll $199,666.75. FY 2325 withholding $32,568.87.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I get a motion to take the business out of order?
Madam Chair, I move that we take the business out of order, specifically that we take up Agenda Item 13 Fiscal Year 24 Appointments as the first order of business.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, so let's go through the appointments. All right, that's the first order of business for the 350th Anniversary Committee. All of those expire on the 30th of June. Can I get a motion to extend those appointments through July 30th of this year?
You have that motion?
Yeah, second? I don't know what are the rules?
Yeah, I guess I'll second it if he's on the committee.
You can second it, you just can't vote on it.
Okay, second.
All right. All in favor? Coughlin, aye.
Regan, aye.
And you're an abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. All right, so that's extended. So then, we've got the following appointments for, in essence, fiscal year 2024. We've got two agricultural committee. We have Barbara Hamblerlin, Steve Novak, and Shelby Hill. For Ag Committee Alternates, which is a one-year, we've got Donald Habberlin and Mark Ledoux. For Animal Inspector, a three-year appointment for Steven Novak. For Beach Committee, we have Alan Jones, Caitlin Servant, Michelle Mandela, Jeff Clark, and Michelle Clark. For Building Inspector, a three-year appointment for Jeff Taylor. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, we've got a three-year appointment for me and nobody else right now, so if we've got any volunteers, no. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
What was the one that you were going on?
Capital Improvement Planning Committee. For Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, we've got Kevin Urcola as the alternate. We've got CDBG Advisory Committee, Bruce Clark, Ryan Pointbrand, Bill Simpson, and myself. For Conservation Commission, we've got Megan Max, Michael Scott Chouquet, Carrie Chouquet, David Pratt, and Chris Kelleher. For Cultural Council, we have William J. Simpson, Jean Lidle.
Jean Lidle.
Lidle, sorry.
She's only till the end of the year? She's extension.
Right, yep, hers is only through the end of 2023. For everyone else, it's a three-year. We've got Sean Adams, I'm sorry, that's the Emergency Medical Squad. So those are the only two for Cultural Council that are renewing this year. Emergency Medical Squad, a three-year appointment for Sean Adams. Mark Lovely, David Martel, Daniel Esser, Ashley Marks, Matthew Roderick, Terry Anderson, Luke Quatrocelli, Matthew Graves, Donna LaFleur, Peter Martel, Ashley Ledger, Kyla Laporte, and Jeffrey White. For Harbor Master, we have Nicholas Thomo.
Okay, that doesn't need to be done, that is a lifetime appointment.
That's a lifetime appointment. For some reason, we have it as a one-year, so we'll omit that. Historical Commission is Carol Plum. Insurance Advisory Committee, we have Barbara Clancy, Linda Lincoln, Sergeant Sean Marino, Holly Chisholm, and Dennis Clark. For Local Public Access Committee, we've got Sharon Mahoney. Planning Board Alternate Lisa Matandi. Overseers Board of Dispatch, Michael Blanchard. Parking Clerk Hearing Officer, Michael Siri. Police Department Chief, Michael Blanchard. Police Patrol Officers Full Time, we've got Sergeant Marino, Lee Murphy, Matthew LaPiori, Justin Default, Angela Rodriguez, or Angelia Rodriguez, and Egbert Tenero. Recreation Committee, Christopher Droschen, Lisa Hanerhan, Brendan Cunningham, and Timothy Nye. Registars, Board of Registars, we've got Carol Plum. Town Hall Improvement Committee, we've got William R. Simpson and Donald Taft. Tree Warden, we have Dennis Tucker. And Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Timothy Simon and Maureen Mariano. And then for Town Council, Kate Kewlaw. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Beth abstained from long-term self-defense.
I'm gonna abstain from Capital Improvement Planning Committee and CDBG Committee, but aye for the balance.
You'll have to sign all those, Brad.
You get to sign them all.
Not at all.
All right, so like, the next order of business is reorganization of the board. So do I have a motion for Chair?
Make a motion for Tom to be the Chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll go ahead and make a motion for Brad to be the Vice Chair.
I can't second it anymore.
Oh.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor for Brad to be Vice Chair? Aye.
Aye.
So I make a motion for Beth to be Clerk.
Well, I can't second myself, so.
Okay, then I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a wrap. Rest of the meeting is yours, sir.
Why, thank you very much, and thank you for your figure shoot until now. All right, next item on the agenda is Town Boards Committees and Employee Code of Conduct. Kelly?
We have a copy of that to send to you, we each have a copy. Should be very close to the top. We have a code of conduct for residents, we have a code of conduct for employees, and this is for elected and appointed boards, chairs, and members.
There it is.
All right, for the... Can I get a motion and a... Can we get this on the table for discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the code of conduct for elected appointed Board and Committee Members.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from the other members of the Board?
I don't have any dis... I read it ahead of time.
Yeah, no, it looked pretty straightforward to me.
Yep, I mean, for the benefit of the audience, do not cause disturbances or disruptions, show respect, use common courtesy, do not speak disrespectfully, no bullying or threatening behavior prohibited, do not engage or lewd offensive behavior, violence is prohibited, smoking, drinking, or appearing to be under the influence is prohibited, and shouting or raised voices directly directed at any employee is strictly prohibited and reason for removal. And I think in my mind, these are generally reasonable guidelines for everyone in the town. We expect that of our employees, we expect that of our visitors, and we should expect that of the people working with the town. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is passed. All right, next item on the agenda is the Appointment to the Cemetery Paving Committee.
Okay, so, you're missing the...
Well, that is the right order, yep.
I'm sorry, it's out of order, go on.
All right.
That would be Mr. Kelleher, who's board voted that he represents Conservation now.
So, I believe the prospective members are Mike Siri, Patrick O'Day, Ronald Koetzer, Don Fagno, Ryan Pointbrand, Kermit Eaton, Peter Masuzzo, and Chris Kelleher. Could I get a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or concerns? All right, and Kelly, is the Charter of this Committee, was that determined by Town Meeting, and therefore, we don't, we just have to appoint members, we don't have to give them a charter and assignment?
That's correct.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't appointing people without particular direction. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those members are appointed, and Kelly, I noticed that we've got Brad still as Clerk here, so we'll have to figure out if the paperwork is...
Yeah, I'll just sign it, and I'll just single line.
Okay.
And correct his name.
All right, yes, that works. All right, Kelly, next on the agenda, Resident Complaint Policy.
That is attached to the code of conduct?
Yes, it is.
And it's a Resident Board Member Complaint Policy. It's also free to listen.
Okay. Could I get a motion to adopt this?
You have a motion to approve the Resident Board Member Complaint Policy.
Second.
All right, thank you. Discussion?
The only discussion I have is, do we want to allow electronic submission? Like fundamentally, that we consider it being sent via email, so long as it meets the other requirements that it's signed, that they indicate their name, that it's dated, and that it has their contact information.
So, if at some point, this contemplating that, if it is actually something viable that can be managed, if you can't go to each different department, because then there's no oversight, you have to be in one clearinghouse?
Right, right, right.
And if we can find an electronic way to do that, which actually Brad and I have been discussing, there may be something that we can embed in the website and get that to work.
Yes, yeah, form, like a form.
Yeah.
Okay.
And/or other means, then this allows that, if we can accomplish it in the future.
Okay, perfect. So, I think we can vote.
Okay, and just the ask for this is that the complaints or concerns be made in writing, signed, dated, and with contact information, which I think is reasonable. If there's a complaint, we just ask that we know who's making the complaint, so that when we, after we investigate, then if we, necessary, we can follow up and ask for more information and take care of that, and I think anonymous complaints are probably not appropriate. All right, any more discussion? All right, seeing as there's none, all in favor of the complaint policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number five, tree removal on 20 Lake Road.
This came to me as a complaint from Mr. Holcraft, because trees were reported as being removed on Historic Road, registered as they were. And I asked the tree warden to investigate, and he was here to address that.
Dennis, would you come up and let us know what you found?
So I received a call about someone taking downtown trees, and I went and investigated. Initially, when I took on this position, I went to Ryan Pointbrand?
Pumperon.
Pumperon, and he gave me some information from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Office of Transportation Planning, which outlines the roads in towns and the right-of-way widths and the surface width. Using that information, I went to 20 Lake Road, and I initially determined that the tree was on town property. I later received a call from Mr. Chaffey wanting to discuss that, and I went and met with him. He used to be the Highway Superintendent, and he informed me that that text, which I got, the right-of-way width out of, has some inconsistencies, and I now agree with him that it does have inconsistencies, because I've found several myself. The road widths along the roads vary in width down the individual road, it changes from time to time. So having realized that, he informed me that his property deed defined the front boundary as along the stone wall, which made complete sense to me, because in New England, stone walls often define boundaries. So using that information, I then randomly, well, let me back up. First, I want to say I'm not a surveyor, I'm an arborist. So using that information, I went back and I randomly chose five locations to measure from the road's edge to the stone wall and took an average. That average turned out to be 8.25 feet, and the tree that he removed, that I initially thought was a town tree, was beyond the 8.25 feet on Mr. Chaffey's property. So I no longer believed it was a town tree at that point. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay, so your finding is that the facts of the matter are that the tree was not in the right-of-way, that it was on his personal property?
It was on his personal property and not in the town's right-of-way.
And therefore, not subject to the regulation about shade trees on scenic roads?
Exactly.
Okay.
One more other point, maybe for a future meeting, a future time, we should probably set a bylaw that defines a consistent policy for if a resident does remove a town tree. I don't believe we have a bylaw. All we have is Chapter 87, Chapter 40 laws to go by. I think we should set a policy for if a resident removes a town tree, what would then be the penalty? And the penalty varies. Chapter 87 is different than Chapter 40. If it's a scenic road, it's one fine, if it's a non-scenic road, it's another fine. So I think maybe we need to come up with a bylaw to have a consistent policy if a town tree is removed.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because in the past, I know we've had residents that remove trees, and instead of fining them by tree, we actually just require the replacement of trees, right? So, we'd have to take a look at what we consider, you know, an appropriate response.
Exactly, and then going forward, be consistent, you know, do one thing in one case and another thing, just to make it fair.
Yep.
All right, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Remember when I filed the complaint? I'm forwarding again.
Mr. Holcraft, I'll allow it, but I'll ask you to, if you feel that, if Dennis's findings are in error, we'll limit ourselves to the facts of the matter, please?
I'll say what I have to say.
If it's factual and relates to the matter, that's great, but it...
Oh, if it's factual, you're not gonna give me a hard time there.
Let's see, I don't think so. We're in agreement, good.
Good, good. So first of all, there's a backdoor agreement here. Three trees were planted because he cut a town tree down. That was a backdoor deal going on. Three trees were planted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're talking about the cutting of the two trees on his property now.
One tree.
My understanding was the complaint was that two trees were cut. And so we're talking of...
I'm talking about the one that I filed the complaint on.
Okay, I thought your complaint was for two trees, your complaint was for one of the trees? Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're very welcome, and it was a town tree, it was right on the edge of the road, and there was an agreement that went on behind the closed doors in this town. He planted three trees on his property to make up for the trees he cut, because there were town trees. That's the truth.
And when did those town trees get cut?
When did the town trees, about three, I don't remember the date, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, maybe?
Okay.
I've been shuffled off the agenda several times, so maybe it's two months ago.
I'm a little confused, because your complaint was for one tree, and now you mentioned three trees were cut, so...
No, did you listen?
No, no, you did, you said your complaint was for one tree, and now you're saying that there was a backdoor deal?
That's correct.
That he would be, okay, that's, I'm not aware of a backdoor deal.
Well, maybe you're not up on what goes on in this town.
Maybe not.
So three trees, if you listen to me, three trees were planted on his property by Mr. Chaffey, because that was the agreement made with certain people to make up for the town trees that he cut, okay? So I didn't say three trees were cut, I said three trees were planted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? So, I know what's going on in this town, the town, it was a town tree and it was cut. As you say, two trees were cut, okay? I know one was a town tree, okay?
And how do you know it's a town tree?
How do I know?
Yes.
Straight on the road, it's a town tree, okay? And we had this all investigated by the tree warden, and he came and he knew it was a town tree. And then there was a little back deal, plant three trees and we'll make this go away. I'm not letting it go away. He has to go by the procedures of everyone else in this town.
Okay.
And that's the reason I brought this to the Board, all right?
And I've driven past Mr. Chaffey's property, and I've seen two stumps on his property. Would you say the stump, which stump do you think was on town property? The one closer to the Mill Pond or the one further from Mill Pond?
The one on the right-hand side of his driveway, if you're heading up Lake Road.
The one closer to the right one?
And it wasn't a stump, it's cut pretty low, it's cut pretty level.
Yes, it's very little sticking out.
That's correct.
So it's the one closer to his driveway.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, so the one further from Mill Pond?
That's right.
Is what I would say.
So the point I'm making here with my complaint is, because this guy does whatever he wants in this town, he gets passes, and you guys are trying to do another pass tonight, which you did, that's okay, but I want to make sure my point is being heard tonight, okay? So don't try to tell me I'm in error of what I'm doing here tonight, because I'm not.
Mm-hmm. All right.
So I missed something, where did he plant the trees?
On his property, probably about eight feet in from the road, maybe more, three of them.
On his property?
Yes, on his.
Mm-hmm.
Am I missing something? Is there a problem with planting trees on?
No, there's nothing, no, but I'm just saying, what happens in the past is people cut trees, and then they say, "Plant some trees and make up for the difference," and that's what happened in this situation.
Yeah, so it seems like this...
So it seems like it's been...
It's consistent with what's happened before, which would not be a special deal. And so, Miss Dennis, it's like, could you please come up here and address the distance of this particular tree site in question to the center line, since you've been there, and I haven't even, I've driven past it, and that's all I've done.
It is close to the road driveway, but it's outside, but just barely. But I'd like to make it clear for the record that I made no deal with Mr. Chaffey about planting trees. He did that on his own accord. And, like I said, I went there, went to his stone wall, which is, I also went to Mass Mapper, and if you look at Mass Mapper, the property line does follow the stone wall. So I went to the road surface, like I said, picked five random places, measured from the road edge to the stone wall, took an average of those distances, which turned out to be 8.5 feet, rounded it off to eight feet, and that tree was, the back edge was, I think, 12, and the front edge was nine something, off the edge of the road. So it's a foot or two at least into his property, not within the town's right-of-way. And again, I made no deal with Mr. Chaffey about planting trees, he did that on his own accord.
Okay, and then, to make sure I understand what you did, your measurement from, you measured from the stone wall on his property to the edge of the asphalt, and you used that to make a baseline of how far the road edge was from the property line to get a feel for, and that eight and a half feet meant that where the stone wall wasn't, that the property line would still be eight, eight and a half feet off there, and by your measurement, the tree was, the nearest edge of the tree closest to the road was nine feet from the asphalt edge, and it went further, maybe 12 feet, if I heard you correctly.
I get the exact diameter of the tree, but yeah, the tree was outside of the town's right-of-way, within his property line.
Okay.
Close, but in his property line.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holcraft, do you have any specific measurements or anything else to contribute to the discussion?
No, but it's pretty hard to get, if you want to get down to inches here, it's pretty hard to get the edge of the road, seeing that the road hasn't been, the dirt keeps coming down, and you know, the edge of the pavement would have to be cleared off with a shovel in order to get the proper measurements. So, as far as I know, it was a town tree, and...
Well, as far as you know...
That's what I'm sticking on, so we don't need to discuss it any further, I made my point.
All right, thank you.
And I know what took place, so you can move on now, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holcraft.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, Dennis.
The information I initially had would put the boundary line behind the stone wall. So the information I got out of the Highway Book would have put, the stone wall would have been into the town's property about feet into the town's property. I think we can all agree that stone walls typically are boundary lines anyway.
Mm-hmm, oh, and based on your initial determination that the property line was on the side of the stone wall away from the road, that led you to think that the town, that the right-of-way extended further off of the road, and once you determined that the property line was on the roadside of the stone wall, that shrank the side, that shrank where the, that shrank how far the right-of-way went off of the road, and therefore was, moved it off? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holcraft, do you have anything else?
He's the next item.
Oh, 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 thank you.
I have a question before you move on.
Let's see, does it...
It does pertain to this, yes.
It does, is it a matter of fact about this?
I would like to ask my question.
And I would like to ask you, Mrs. Washburn, is this a question about the facts here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, please, come forward and ask your question about the facts. If we get into a screed, we will be done.
We're not gonna get into a screed.
Excellent.
I have a simple question to the board, to the tree warden. You just indicated that when you looked at the boundaries, that the boundary line on the deed, that you looked at the deed and the boundary line was beyond the stone wall?
So initially, the information I had from the Highway Department Book said that the right-of-way was 50 feet. So I subtracted the surface width, and then half of the remaining distance on either side of the road would be what the town's right-of-way was. That puts the stone wall on the town property. So finding that to be unusual, and I've also known this other consistencies in the Highway Department information, then, like I said, I took randomly five locations, I measured from the road edge to the stone wall. His deed says that the property goes to the front line of the property is the stone wall, so going with that information, I measured five locations, took an average, came out to be 8.25 feet, and the leading edge of that tree was nine feet, the back edge was actually 10, whatever the diameter of the stump was. So that tree was at least a foot into Mr. Chaffey's property.
Okay, so when you did your measuring, did you take into consideration the width of the stone wall?
Mrs. Washburn, I think he already answered that question.
No, he did not.
He did, he said that the property line was on the edge of the stone wall closest to there, so therefore, the width of the stone wall is not relevant to where the town's right-of-way ends and Mr. Chaffey's property begins, because his stone wall is entirely on his own property.
It's his property.
The stone wall is on his property, so the width has nothing to do with it, just where the edge is. He, it is what he said.
No, what he said was, is that when he read the Highway Department's description, the Highway Department's description said that the boundary was on the other side of the stone wall.
Yes, and as he said after that, he has noticed inconsistency in the highway drawings, and that the deed in town records from Mr. Chaffey's property indicates the stone wall is entirely on his property, and so there...
That's not what he said either.
That, I'm s...
I didn't say entirely on his property, I said this area defines...
Defines the edge of his property.
Right.
It defines...
That's why I asked...
Would it, okay.
Okay, that's why I asked, if he took into consideration the length of the stone wall.
Yeah, it's usual, it's usual and customary that it's the outside edge of a stone wall that's the defining part from a surveyor perspective, unless it's otherwise explicitly defined.
Mm-hmm, and that's, and that's what you used, okay. All right, are we good?
We're good.
Excellent, thank you. All right, let's see, so, let's see, number six? We have number six, review tree report from the tree warden?
No, we're on the wrong agenda, the agenda underneath.
The agenda under, what, we have two...
Well, we had to update it in the last minute because things came in.
No one told me?
Number six, number six.
All right, there we go, yep, I see your name, Mr. Holcraft, and that's why you did stay up here, so hold on a second. Since this is the official agenda, I need to mark my notes onto here. All right, the next one is Mr. Hol... All right, the next one is, uh, Mr. Hol, Mr. Holcraft, minutes of meetings and recording of meetings. Now, Kelly, we're going to start with Mr. Holcraft's concerns?
He has to be on the agenda to discuss this, that's the initial idea.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Holcraft.
Okay, I'm on the planning board here.
Hmm.
And we're grossly behind on minutes. I called up our chairman, Kevin Erkler.
Hmm.
Who is related to Sharon Mahoney, who used to be our former chairman, and I asked for the Zoom minute, Zoom meetings, meaning the audios, and I also asked for audio tapes. And he out flat told me no, twice I've called him on the phone, he's told me no twice, that's our stuff, and it's, we're not giving it back to the town.
Okay.
I then told him, I says, "I've talked with the AG, and I've also been talking to the Secretary of State," and they said that that is the, that is the property of the town of Brookfield, which it is. That's a fact, you like facts, right?
I love facts.
So, I want, I want all the Zoom meetings, and I want the audios, and I want the minutes that we're behind on in a year, about a year and a half. And the planning board is under scrutiny for being, whatever the court, we're in court, for some members not being up to par, so we're in the court on, on those charges concerning the Tassie property. So, I'm trying to get a handle on which end is up, and I haven't got the minutes and I haven't got the Zooms.
Hmm.
And it's been a year and a half, and I, I want that, I want, I'm a member of the planning board, and I want all those tapes and audios and Zooms, and I don't want to keep getting stroked, I want the stuff.
Okay.
So, and I, and I also found out through the other town, other board meetings, other boards, boards, they haven't done their minutes either. So, I want to know what's going on. You selectmen are supposed to be overseeing our town, uh, and when I'm on a, I'm, I'm on their planning board and I, and I, they give me minutes and it's a year old, how am I going to remember what's a year old? Supposed to have minutes done within 30 to maybe 90 days at the most.
Hmm.
And, and this is grossly, grossly not being done by our town. And it's not just the planning board, it's the whole town. So, I want to know what you guys are doing and how are we going to go forward, and when is this material going to be returned? Now, we didn't have a secretary for a while, but we got one now, and I keep going to her, "Why are you not doing minutes?" Well, the, the chairman only gives me a couple things at a time. And I says, "Well, why is that?" Well, that's what she's doing. I said, "You got time?" She goes, "Yeah." So, I want to see all that stuff dumped in her office, and then she can do her work as she sees fit to get the minutes caught up.
Okay.
And I want to know what we're going to do about getting that stuff. And I filed it, I filed a request last night with the town clerk, um, requesting all this stuff.
Okay, now, the planning board's elected, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so every member on the planning board is elected?
That's correct.
Okay.
Except the secretary.
Yes, the secretary.
Or clerk, whatever.
Yeah, I'd say, they're, they're not a member of the planning board, they serve the planning board.
Right, we had one, we had one that was like a, I don't know if you want to call her an alternate, Christine Wasman, I think her name was, I think she's here tonight. Hi there.
Yeah, and, and there's the alternate member who votes under certain circumstances.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, uh, it's like, I, I'm not sure, a, as, as a, a board of fully elected members, I'm not sure what action you ta, what action you expect the select board to take to force its will on another elected board. The other elected boards, they're elected by the town mem, by the, by the citizens of this town, just like us. They have their remit, and their, and they have the things they're responsible for. Now, I agree with you, the minutes are important, the minutes should be done, but I would, I'd, I'd like you to, I, I, what do you expect this board to do, other than maybe talk to people, uh, talk to the member, other members of the select board and say, "You know, you really ought to get your minutes done." Because fundamentally, the select board has no enforcement power over a, a, an elected, a board of other elected members.
Hmm, I, I understand all this elected stuff, but it's still, you have to ins, insist on the elected boards and the regular committees that are not elected, you have to insist that they have to get the minutes, you have to stay on them. And they just can't, just because I'm an elected member, I just can't go willy-nilly and do whatever I want? No, you can't, I'll do what I want. No, you have to insist on elected members that you have to get the work done.
Yeah, I, I, to a certain extent, I think that's up to the voters of the town to insist that they're elected board members.
No, you guys, you guys are at the helm, you have to have some kind of procedure just to speak to the boards and the committees to get their committees.
I mean.
Or have the, have the administrators, you know, have her do it.
We, we intention, yeah, so.
You just can't, you just can't let this go on.
I, I understand your concern.
How about your board, how many, are you guys got your minutes up to date?
No.
How far are you behind, Brad?
Roughly 120 sets.
120 sets of minutes?
Yes, sir.
Shame on this town, shame on all of us.
It's been brought up, it's been brought up at prior meetings, which is why.
So, it was, how's anybody going to remember minutes? Minutes are a document of what is actually taking place at a meeting.
Yeah, and then.
And we're in a, and the planning board, the planning board's in court right now, we're being attacked saying that we're not, we didn't do our job, or it was illegal, certain members did illegal stuff. I'm on that board, and I'm not going down with the ship, okay? I want to know what's in the minutes, and I want to know what's been done on the audios.
Okay.
The audios have all been deposited in a Dropbox, so we have all of the Zoom recordings.
All the Zooms are in the Dropbox?
Yes.
All of them?
We received them all yesterday, yes.
Okay, all right, so that's it.
Yep, um, when I, when I, when you and I spoke.
Yeah.
I reached out to IT and asked them to make it, make a site or a Dropbox so that the audios, which are too large for what we had available, had a location that they could be put. So, now they're all in the custody of the town.
Okay. So, what are we going to do to move forward, to, to get, to get this whole mess, the whole town, all the committees up to par?
Well, I mean, I see this as a, as a twofold issue. There is one, there is the, all right, we're do, going, we are going to do better going forward.
What's that mean, better?
Better, that means we're, we're going to get our meeting, we're going to get our minutes, it's like, the goal is to get the minutes done on time, and I don't, what, what that timeframe is, I don't know. I'm new to the chairmanship, I, this, this, this issue was brought up at the department head meeting earlier today, uh, when, when Kelly and I met with the department heads, and Mike Siri brought it up as a concern. And so, it's like, that's, so, it's new to, it's new to my radar, and therefore, it's like, I haven't had a chance to think about it and do all my research. But the intention is going forward is to get the minutes done and submitted in, in a reasonable period of time, and then, and then, in parallel with that, go back and fill in the holes for the missing minutes. It's like, and that's, and I'll be, it's like, we have, I don't know how completely we'll be able to do that, because it depends on where the holes are and whether all the members of that committee have moved on from the time that the minutes are missing from. I, I don't know, it's, it's sort of, it's an unknown unknown, it's, we can figure it out.
I know a lot of committees have, those people have moved on that were doing minutes and so on, and that's great, that's important, and that's why we've got to stay up on this.
Right, and that, and that's why, to me, the, one of the first orders is, 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 let's stop digging this hole. We're, we're in a hole where we're behind on minutes. So, first order is, is stop digging. The minutes, the meetings that we have now, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try, we're going to try and get them done on, completed on time. I know we're, I, I know in our agenda today, we're approving minutes from meetings that happened in the last month or two, I believe. And so, we're, and so, Dem, so, to a certain extent, leading by example. And then, also identify what are we missing minutes for, and what is our, and, and work with the various committees and boards to do that. Now, for the committees, the select board, a, as the appointing body for many of the committees in town, the select board does have a certain amount of authority over them. For the elected boards, the ultimate authority resides with the voters. The select board can cajole, it can encourage, it can facilitate, but if the board doesn't want to do it, the select board has no enforcement power with a fellow elected board. And therefore, our, our, our scope for action there is limited compared to the committees. It's just a fact of our government. Yeah, go ahead, Brad, I'm doing all the talking.
Can I make a recommendation? I mean, because, I guess speaking kind of as a resident myself, is, I would like to see the same thing. Catch me if I'm speaking out of terms here, Kelly, but the town clerk is responsible for the meeting minutes.
No, he's not.
No.
He is a repository for meeting minutes. He is not responsible, he is not the meeting minute police.
Okay.
And he is not responsible or in charge, nor does he have any authority to make anybody give him the minutes, but they're supposed to.
So, he is the repository?
He is the repository, yes.
And does he maintain also the My Town Government? I guess what I'm getting?
Does he maintain it?
What I'm getting, can he give us a list? Because here's the problem, people, like Cultural Council's perfect example, if you look on My Town Government, there's none posted on there. But I do know that they turn them in to Mike, so I would like a report from someone.
So, there is a law that they have to be turned in to Mike, there is no law that they have to be posted.
Right, so what I would like is a report from Mike of what has been turned in and what, so we can figure out what's missing in the town.
Yeah, well, and I, I agree, that's, part of that's saying, okay, let's ident, let's pick 10 years as an arbitrary number, just because I, I got to start somewhere, and say, okay, let's look back over 10 years, what meetings have we had? Of those meetings, which ones do we, does it appear we don't have minutes more? We can check My Town Government, we can check Mike's records, and then after that, we can say, okay, for these dates, yeah, we found something on My Town Government, we found, Mike has something in his stash, um, that he's recorded as his, as his responsibility. And then, and then we got, okay, for Agricultural Commission, here's what we're missing. For Cultural Council, here's what we're missing. For Town Hall Improvement, here's what we're missing. For, uh, Board of Health, here's what we're missing. For Planning Board, here's what we're missing. For Select Board, here's what we're missing.
So, he may not, he may not necessarily have a list of all of the agendas for which minutes are missing, so he wouldn't know which one, not necessarily know, he'll know what he has, but he may not necessarily know what's missing because he, if it's not on the website, he'd have to cross-reference all of the agendas.
Hmm.
And those he doesn't have to keep.
He doesn't have to keep the agendas?
I don't believe so.
No, that.
Not if they're posted, so some of them that are posted, he doesn't need to keep.
And how many minutes are supposed to reflect? However, the meetings posted in this town, is it only my town?
They're posted on that website.
On My Town Government, so.
Yes, that is the official posting location. Now, as the Select Board, you have the authority to choose the official posting location.
I think it should be My Town Government, or if the website can handle something, up for anything electronic.
I'd say, I'd say My Town Government needs to be the location, because, because.
That's where the official site is now, but if you're not happy with that, you can change it, yeah.
I'm, from what, from my use of it, the My Town Government suits our needs, it's more, right now, the issue is more people availing themselves of it than a limitation of its capabilities.
They need to learn.
I mean, to the, to the point of.
It's not hard, it's not hard to add a file to it.
No, if I, if I, if I need to schedule a meeting for 7 o'clock on Thursday, and it's 7:02 on Tuesday, and so therefore, it's 47 hours and 58 minutes before, I can't schedule the meeting until 7:02, because it will not let me schedule a meeting less than 48 hours in advance unless I declare it an emergency, and.
It's a good safeguard.
And, and, and I, and I appreciate the fact that it, it makes it very hard for someone to schedule a meeting improperly. I, I'm, I'm happy that feature exists. So, um, that's, uh, just a moment, Mrs. Washburn. So, uh, so, Mr. Holcraft, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm, I, I don't think we're going to resolve it today. I, as, as the new chair, I, I need to think about this to, to decide what the best path forward is, especially for the Select Board and the appointed committees. For the, for the elected boards, um, I'm open to ideas, but as they are autonomous, I'm not sure what action the Select Board can do, other than encourage them.
Yeah, Tom, I think that's something we actually need to discuss and take a vote on, fundamentally.
Okay, uh, let's see. All right, uh, let's see, uh, Mrs. Washburn, you had a quick question?
Well, last night we went to the, the Board of Health meeting, and they had two attorneys from.
We need you to speak into the mic, please, so it's on the recording, thank you.
Can you speak louder?
It's, well, we need the mic to pick you up for the people.
Sure, so last night, the Board of Health had a, um, they had two representatives from the Massachusetts Board of Health, whatever they were, they were two attorneys who deal with the open meeting laws and the meeting minutes and this, and they put on a wonderful presentation explaining what the open meeting laws were, how long you had to submit the meeting minutes in, how long you had until they had to be, um, you, you have to have them approved, and you, the whole nine yards. They were wonderful when they came in, it was a, you know, it was a very, it was very informational, and, and I think every board in this town should have the ability to have an organization like that organization that came in last night, and speak to each department about how they're supposed to handle their meeting minutes. Now, Sharon Mahoney is an example, David said that she is no longer on the board, and she hasn't got any meeting minutes in. Christine recorded every hearing that we had about Mr. Tassie with her phone sitting right there. There are audio recordings of every single meeting. Those should have been submitted to the town. Those belong to the town, they don't belong to her personally, she was working as the clerk for the, for the planning board, and that was her job, and as her job, she recorded those meeting minutes, so those belong to the town, because she was a paid employee at the time. That's number one. Number two, anybody that leaves an office, like Mrs. Mahoney, knew that she was leaving and she wasn't rerunning for her office. She should have had all her ducks in row and had all the documents in here before she left as, as a, an elected official, and, and she should have turned them into the town clerk.
I, I understand, but I would, I would like us to focus on going forward, not on recriminations for what's happened.
But there should be a bylaw on the town books that says that if you're leaving an elected or appointed position, that any documents that you have that need to be submitted should be turned in by a certain date after the election.
I, I understand what you're getting at. It's, my thought is, though, that my, my, I would be surprised if we didn't have, well, I won't say I'd be surprised, I would-
No, actually, we have the fewest number of bylaws in the state of Massachusetts. And honestly, from a standpoint of, of what, of it being recommended as a bylaw, it sounds like the state law and the open meeting law defines what the standards are.
Yeah.
And we've been falling short of that standard clearly, okay?
And I would, and-
But, but a bylaw, let me just finish my thought, if you don't mind. Uh, but a bylaw is not going to, I don't see how having a separate bylaw or even having a separate policy is going to do anything different than whether or not there's a state law in place. All it is, is duplication. I think fundamentally, to your point, uh, we need to focus, one, on what we're doing going forward. In the instances regarding where those, those documents can actually be obtained by some appropriate means through communication and negotiation with people that have possession of those materials, we can make a reasonable effort to, to complete the record, right?
Yeah.
But I, I think, I think that's the scope of it.
Yeah. And I would, I would also observe that I would not say it is the responsibility of any one member of a board, that the responsibility is the board's responsibility to post minutes as an entity. And therefore, the responsibility resides with the board.
Exactly.
And with the members of the board, not with any one member of the board. I would say the, I would expect the chair would be responsible for leading the charge for that, but that it would, that the other members, if the chair, if the chair is rotating out, then it, then I think we need, then maybe a, a nudge to the other members, saying, hey, if this person's going away, you might want to make sure they get all their minutes in.
Yeah. Well, right. And fundamentally, I mean, we're, we've been approving, what, minutes going back to like 2014, I think, or 2017?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so when I started here, I became aware of the issue in the selectmen's office. No minutes had been posted for 10 years, roughly.
10 years.
Roughly 10 years.
That's that.
From the time I started, because I made it a point that going forward, we are, we are supposed, as the Select Board, we are supposed to be the benchmark, not the worst offender. All minutes will be done timely, and they have been from the date that I started, and back minutes have been added to your meetings for approval, so that we're doing a catch-up. We have a plan to, to catch up on this four-hour board. Now, what the other boards do, you have power, like I said before, over your appointed boards and committees. If they don't do their minutes, you don't have to reappoint them. You don't have to let the boards and committees stand. However, there are some you have to by statute, but the electeds, as you stated, that's, that's entirely up to those boards. You can cajole, you can suggest, you can, you can-
Request.
Request, but there's no teeth. There's absolutely nothing you can do if they refuse.
Excuse me, I beg to differ. You can report them to the Secretary of State.
That's correct.
Okay, we do have state organizations that are set up to handle those types of things. And as the, the body that runs our town, the three of you are our selectmen, you're the body that runs our town. So if they're not complying with the laws the way that they should be, then it's up to this board to make the decision to contact the state and notify the state so that the state can step in and the state can get done, but, but obviously, you don't have enough teeth to do.
And what can the state do at that point? Are you aware?
They can get fined.
So if, if they're not doing their minutes, they can get fined? If somebody files a public records request and those records are not available, they can, they can start a civil suit in, in the court. And if they are knowingly not doing their minutes, after being explained that this is the law, you have to do it this way, that is a willful act, and they're not covered by professional liability, nor is Town Council available to help them.
And what happens in a case of, um, we'll pick the Planning Board. Let's say it's an all-new Planning Board, and they're up to date, but prior Planning Boards weren't up to date. Then what do you do in that instance when there's-
So what I can do is I can reach out to the Attorney General's Office and let them know what the situation is, and ask what they would recommend we do going forward, and if they would be willing to monitor us.
Yeah. That's what they told me down in Boston. They said, come before the selectmen, ask for a request, talk to the members or whos others in charge of the Planning Board, and if they don't do what they, they won't do what you need, they said they'll come down here and they'll step in and they'll take charge of the town. And they will, they will make these so-called elected people that you can't touch, they will make them get their minutes done. And I don't want to do that. I'm trying to do this within the town.
What's on?
I got advice from them, and that's what they said.
There's other legal liability other than just the Planning Board, so?
I, I think after the meeting with the attorneys last night, I think those attorneys are also, are probably at the point, when they were looking at our website for the town, our, whatever government website it is, and they couldn't find any meeting minutes to like 90% of our boards. I, I think they're going to pursue going to the state and, and letting the state know that we just don't have it together.
Because the meeting minutes aren't on that website, on the My Town Government.
They're not there, they're not there. I can't, I can't wave my magic wand and fix it and fix it in the past.
We're not asking.
Okay. But, and so the first order is, is to go forward. Kelly, question. This started with Mr. Holdcraft mentioning he had specific requests regarding the Planning Board. To your knowledge, do the recordings in the, that we have in the Dropbox, are they going to address his request? Are they going to, are they substanti, are they enough, do they respond to his request?
I have some confusion about your request.
Okay. I'll see if I can help you straight.
The way, the way you phrased it, it sounds like what you're looking for is for all of this to be brought to the town and made into minutes. Or are you looking for actual copies? I know you want to view some of them. The executive session recordings, you can view because you're a Planning Board member, but you can't, you have to view them in isolation here in the Town Hall.
That's correct.
Because they're executive session, and the issue is not closed.
Because it hasn't been resolved, right?
Correct.
An issue.
Do you want actual copies of these for yourself, or are you looking for these just to be given to the town?
No, I want actual copies given-
For you?
As an elected member of the Planning Board, yes.
Okay.
And I want to be able to review myself the audios. I got to pull them off the, that, where you have them, right?
Yeah, well, we're going to have to actually get you a place here at the Town Hall that you can watch them.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Could we give him full copies of the open sessions of the Planning Board, and we would only need?
Yes, once we have them.
Yes. But they're in the Dropbox now, I thought.
No. We're not, those are Zoom meetings. They're not minutes.
Right.
You want us to give him copies of the recordings?
I thought that's what Mr. Holdcraft was asking.
Well, I like that, too, if I can, you know, and I like copies.
You said you don't have a computer. What are you going to watch them on? I mean, you can have them, but I'm just wondering how you're going to access them.
As long as you give me the copies, I have someone that will help me.
Okay.
It's already been arranged, but I need to have-
Okay. So, so-
To have the Zoom meetings and the-
With, with all public records requests?
Right.
There's a form that we fill out. We don't provide the thumb drives for them. They're extremely expensive because they're multiple gigabytes.
Yeah, and they only hold so much, right.
Right. So you need to provide us with a thumb drive, and we'll drop whatever we can on what you got.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Oh, yeah.
His, his tech support will make sure he comes with the right piece of gear.
Yeah. I'll find out what the, um, size is.
Yeah. Okay. So Kelly, you can coordinate with Mr. Holdcraft on getting him the, the recordings of the open session of the Planning Board, and we'll get him started with that.
The Zoom meetings, but, you know.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Once we have the thumb drive, now, not that this is anybody's business, but I'm going out for a medical reason, and I won't be back till next Thursday.
Okay.
There's a time limit on this request. I can ask Jacob to help us with getting the recordings, which ones are the right ones in, for Mr. Holdcraft, but I need that thumb drive. Without that, I can't help him. Are you willing to wait till I come back?
Yes, I, I will give you time, yes.
Okay. I'll be back next Thursday.
I mean, I did the 10-day-
I'll be back a week from today.
The 10-day request for, you know, for information, but I mean, I will, you know, if you say you're going to have it in 15 days, I'm not going to-
Yeah, so get me a thumb drive, drop it off, drop it off here on Monday, and when I come back on Thursday, I'll see that Jacob gets you what you need.
Yeah, I can get the 4th of July in there somewhere, so.
Yeah, that's Tuesday.
Yeah, right.
So-
So I can hook up with you around, you know, after, after the 4th at some point.
Yep.
Okay? That's fine.
Can I also make a motion of having Mike Siri take a look at My Town Government, see what's missing, see what he has and cross-reference, and come up with a, what's that?
We can make a request of him.
Yeah.
So you want a motion to make that request, and then you all vote it, and then the board asks this? Is that what you're looking for?
Do we need to, or can, yeah?
We can make the request.
Yeah, I'd like to make the request.
Would it, would it make more, I understand where you're going, Brad, would it make more sense to have Lois or Karen do the first pass on that via My Town Government?
No, it would not.
Okay. Thank you.
Technology.
Or someone else in the office.
Nope. Mike, Mike is the official keeper of those records, and no one else can go in his vault and find them.
Right. And, and Mike can go to My Town Government just as well as Lois or Karen?
Yes.
All right.
And he's actually an admin. There may be some backdoor way to get a report that I'm not aware of, to get a list of all the missing minutes.
All right. So, so are we doing a motion to, uh, I'll, I'll take a motion for the, for the board to ask Mike to, to take an inventory of the meetings and whether the, and for all the boards and committees, and whether they have a, there are minutes on file for those meetings going back to?
Can you make your motion quite so convoluted, because it needs to be more direct?
Okay, then let me phrase. I move that we ask Mike Siri to, um, review the records and provide an inventory of meetings and whether those meetings have minutes on file for town boards and committees.
Okay, wait a minute. You want a motion to ask the town clerk, AKA Mike Siri, to review the inventory of all?
Of-
Meetings?
Of all, of the, of the, of his, of his records for a listing of meetings and whether
they, whether minutes are publicly available.
Okay, stop.
Yep.
Yep, this needs, deficit way too overbroad.
From, from July, from July 1st, 2013, which is 10 years ago from Saturday. And we'll go back 10 years, because that's kind of what we talked about, and I think that's, I, I think that number, and it's like, and that will give us a feel for how deep the hole is. And like I said, first thing we do, let's stop digging. And then we start filling it in, and hopefully, we don't bury ourselves in it. We just fill it enough, we can stay on top of the pile of dirt, until we're up at the surface.
And I think going forward, I mean, for anyone on any committee, they, I mean, I'm not adding this to it, but if you're on a committee or a board and you notice that it's not getting done, see something, say something.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we need to, we can discuss this, but I think we need to point out to the committees that it, that they're expected to produce minutes, and if they don't, they're not doing their job, and we may need to consider not reappointing some people to committees. And unfortunately, given how some of the committees are understaffed, that may make the committees defunct.
Yeah, this is kind of, this is kind of a catch-up.
Well, see, and, and I think, yeah.
So another thing that we did is we got the old boards clerk who was supposed to be assisting with minutes. That was a primary function of that job, is to help minutes for the most regulated boards, the zoning board, the planning board, and the ZBA.
And are those meetings being posted that?
No. She is, she is very behind in those meeting, minutes. They're extenuating circumstances, and they're now being caught up, from what I understand, because I, I actually went down and had a serious chat that this needs to get done. This is supposed to be prioritized. So I'm waiting to see if what I was promised is going to happen. I'll find out when I hear from the Planning Board and Conservation and ZBA if their minutes, and I'm watching to see if their minutes are uploaded. Concom's minutes are pretty up to date, actually. They're closer than the other boards, so.
All right. Mr. Gallo, do you have a question?
So I, I wanted to point something out. The first time that I went to our, our website, if you go to the-
The town's website?
The town's website.
Okay, yeah.
It will say like in certain areas, these are minutes, and only shows like two. And it makes it look really, really bad. I think it would be in the best interest of the town to take those off. Don't delete them, make sure we have them on the, the other side. And get them off there, because if, like, those people at the Board of Health meeting last night, they couldn't be looking at those, because they said they were horrible. And if you look at that, it looks like we have minutes from like 10 years ago, two postings, that's it.
No, that, thank you. That makes sense, that it's like, there should be one place, and everyone, everywhere else says, go look over there.
Right, exactly.
And My Town Government is where that is, where over there is at the moment.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, that's good to know. Kelly, is that something that you can, can look into in the next couple of weeks?
Can I make a separate motion, or did we vote that?
Um, I've asked for the motion, I don't think I've gotten it yet, about asking Mike to back 10 years.
So technically, as a chair, you're not actually supposed to make the motion?
No, I said, I said I asked for it.
You're, you're asking for a really specific, convoluted motion, so you're actually making the motion.
Can I try to make the motion?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so let me try to make one motion. The first one is that we're going to formally request a, a 10-year audit of the, of meetings to meeting minutes from the town clerk.
So moved.
Second, you, actually, well, you moved.
I moved.
Oh, second. Okay. All right. Any, I think we've, is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Can I make a second motion regarding this? Going forward, on a quarterly basis, make a similar request if, if it's not received from the town clerk.
Did you key, naturally?
No, to do the same thing.
To do the same thing.
I mean, second. Did you second it, Brad?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so that the idea is to give us visibility into the recent performance so that we can do a better job of-
Right, so we're monitoring it.
Helping, helping the town stay on top of this, and help keep us from digging deeper. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did, did we agree, or do we need to make a motion that it all be posted on My Town Government?
It's already the official spot, so you don't need to do that again. You did say that you agree that that's where it should stay.
Okay.
You don't need a motion to redo that.
All right. Mr. Holdcraft, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's, it's an important issue.
Yep, thank you for hearing me.
All right, and Lois? All right, agenda item number seven, tree, review tree report.
You're back, my good sir.
Yes.
Before we move on to that, just a point of clarification from my notes. So you're going to do this quarterly only if you don't get a response? Or are you going to do this quarterly period?
I thought it was quarterly period.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wrote it right.
That, that was my intent also, that it's quarterly going forward.
Okay.
And, I mean, I would say we'd ask Mike, the first report should be up through the June 23rd today.
What kind of timeframe are you going to give him to get that done? Because that is a very tall order, and if he's going through stacks of paper?
It's undefined, and I would be, I would be okay with him saying, okay, I got fiscal year '23 done, then '22, and if he chunks it up, rather than making him, rather than asking him to save everything for the end. Um, I mean, my thought is, as long as we're making progress on it, it's okay. It's one of those, we, and we'd have to negotiate, I think he'd need to be here and say, I can do it in this much time, rather than us just dropping a timeline on him. I don't think that's fair to him.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Kelly, where else at with this?
As far as I'm concerned.
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, so, uh, since I took on this position, one of the reasons I took this position is the town has a dead tree problem. I think, you know, I remember a few years back, we had a gypsy moth infestation, now called the spongy moth, and it stressed the trees, didn't necessarily kill them within that particular year, but it, it defoliated a lot of trees. They used a lot of stored energy to try to refoliate, sending them to the next season stressed, and they don't necessarily die in the year of the infestation, but in the subsequent years, I think everybody who's driven around town has seen dead oak trees everywhere. Since I took this position on, I've had 15 requests from residents to, to remove trees, and they, they range in a hazard rating from extreme to high to moderate. So the moderate is the lowest, and extreme is the worst. I have 15 trees from resident requests. I also did a, a visual inventory of, of what I believe were three of the roads in town that have the most dead trees, Molasses Hill, Wells Road, and Weber Road. And in total, I have 65 trees that are, need to be removed, most of which are dead. And that number will continue to rise as I inventory other streets in town. Do you have any questions?
No, I would just say, for the ones in a dead condition, it's like that's a, you didn't, you haven't assigned risk ratings to those yet?
No, not all of them are dead. I haven't assigned a risk rating. I did a...
Yeah, most are dead.
In tree risk evaluation, there's several steps. The first evaluation would just be a limited visual assessment determining if it needs to go or not. The second would be a level-two risk assessment, which I did do on all of the resident requests. So I have a more detailed risk assessment for the resident request. And then the final risk assessment, a level-three, is almost never done unless it's a historic tree or you're gonna use a lot of equipment, like sounding, sonar, things that wouldn't be done. So on the roads that have a lot of dead trees, I just did a level-one assessment. And the dead ones all obviously will need to be removed. And the resident request ones, I prioritize those higher because the residents have called them.
Okay. And the ones on Molasses Hill Road, Weber, and Wells, are, those are all on town right of way?
They are.
Okay.
They are all in town right of way. I found more than were in our town, and I have yet to, but I will speak to National Grid to see if we can get them to do some of this work for us. I did that previously on Allen Road. They removed 23 trees, National Grid removed 23 trees on Allen Road at no cost to the town. Four of those trees were our town trees that they removed for us. So I'm gonna try the same thing with these roads.
Okay.
And I would like to start with the resident requests first, which is going to take up a lot of our annual budget.
That's gonna take up most of the operating budget?
We have a warrant article.
And I know I have the warrant article, but the resident requests alone will probably go through most of the annual budget, the 12,500.
You should use a, yeah, okay. All right, nevermind.
And I do intend to use the warrant article to address the dead trees, but I'd also like to leave some in reserve in the event of a horrible storm or something like that.
So the operational budget, you said, is pretty much gonna get eaten by the...
The 15 resident requests.
15 resident requests. How much was the warrant article for?
12,500.
No, the operating budget was 12,500. I thought the warrant article...
The warrant article was from a prior year. It was, it's down to 50,000.
That's right.
That's what's remaining and it is 50,000.
Okay. So... The operational budget, it sounds like it's covered by this, but do you, do you have a, and it sounds like you're trying to bring in National Grid for these three roads.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to see what we can get the grid to do for us.
Okay. So do you know, and I know with National Grid, it's always a little bit, like getting answers is sometimes tricky. So I get that, right? When do you think is a reasonable amount of time to know what we're going to get potentially from them so that then we can take a look at that warrant article budget and maybe start programming the burn down of what's not gonna get handled by them?
Yeah, and they have their budget constraints, too. I have a relationship with the Central Forester for National Grid. She's pretty good about getting back to me, but obviously, like, I'll make the request. She's gotta send somebody out to do their own evaluation and then depending on their budget and resources for the town. When I called her about Allen Road, she had already told me that there was no more tree work scheduled for this year in Brookfield. But then she sent her forester out there to look at it and she came back and said, "Oh, yeah, we're gonna take down 23 of those trees."
How many were the town trees?
There was four town trees, but she took down 23 in all on Allen Road.
Okay, thank you.
And they're, again, their concern is their transmission lines. So hopefully, some of these trees, and they are near their lines, they might wanna just do it anyway for their own benefit.
Molasses Hill Road loses power often.
Yes, and, and we have a dead oak tree problem in town, which is one of the reasons I wanted to take on this show to see if I could help do something about that.
I bought a generator and now the power never goes out.
I'm looking to go solar.
We did go out to bid for tree work.
Yes.
It was a successful procurement. We have, the most responsible responsive bidder signed the contract today. And as chief procurement officer, I will be counter-signing that. And I wanted to explain the contract with you prior to that. It's basically, it's an up to $55,000 amount. It's a per-day fee that can be, that is adjusted depending on what we're using. If we're using a chipper and ground crew, it's one fee, one price. If they're, if we're using our town highway guys for doing the ground crew and chipping, then it's a different price for the cutting and the removal of the tree. If we need a loader, it's another price. So, so they were all very reasonable. The firm that got the bid was Rusty's Tree and his reputation is actually, we couldn't find anybody saying anything bad about him. All the other towns were really impressed with his work. And he was able to furnish the appropriate bonds. I spoke with the insurance company. I don't have the bond yet, but they assured me that he's getting the bond. It's a, it's actually a prevailing wage bond. And so as of July 1st, Mr. Tucker can start working on his trees, so...
I checked Mr. Russ's references and the only negative thing that any one of the people I spoke to said was, "The only problem you'll have with him is his scheduling because he's so busy."
Yeah, and that's actually not a negative. That's just a, just a heads up, right? You may have to wait a little bit, but...
He's coming to my house, too. It's a scheduling.
A scheduling challenge.
But I think everyone...
But he had to be available based on what the bids were, within a certain timeframe for emergencies, so he's gonna have to prioritize. So...
Mr. Jerry, any questions for you or the question to, because we need to discuss the budget here and I didn't get the answers.
Well, I, Mr. Holcraft, if you have questions about the contract, I think those would be appropriate for the, for the town administrator.
It's not the contract, it's just in general, but the tree work here, it's been hopefully performed.
Is that something that needs to happen in meeting or is that something that you could discuss with him offline? Just because we have a large agenda and it's already 7:30.
I just want to ask him a couple of quick questions. I just want to know if a highway department is gonna be working with us to keep the project down?
Okay.
That's why I said that it was quoted with or without. So if they're not available, they can do it at a specific fee. Otherwise, we can have our highway guys do it if their schedule works out to do the work.
And so I would, I would say that the, given the structure, Mr. Holcraft, given the structure of the contract, that we get a lower rate if we provide the, if I understand it, the ground crew and the chipper?
Yep.
Then I would say that we would certainly want to, want to prioritize that work, prioritize that mode of operation based on Ryan's, on Ryan's crew's availability. And the thought being that, I would, I would say, Dennis, if you're having trouble getting that scheduled and so therefore you're either having to leave things up longer than you're comfortable with because you can't get Ryan there and so you need to go with a higher rate, let us know. And so that way, we can understand why, what's going on, this pulling Ryan away from that. And if it's a safety issue, it's a safety issue. But ideally, it's like if Ryan's got some flexibility to schedule, he'll be able to be the ground crew on that day and let us get the lower rate. Mr. Holcraft, was that sufficient for your concern?
Yeah. I'm sure the highway department will work whatever schedule he comes up with.
Yeah, and I think that's to a certain extent going to be, and if Rusty's Tree Service is primarily scheduling as in you can't get them early, you have to wait for them, then I think that's more likely that you'll be able to align with Ryan's crew because he'll have more time to say, "Oh, yeah, we have Rusty's coming in on these two days." So he'll make sure not to schedule things, he'll leave his guys open to work on as ground crew on those days. So I think those kinda work well together in this case.
Thank you for having the passion.
He's worked for the town before, right?
Yes, he has. And I'd like to just add one more thing. He gave us a very reasonable rate.
I agree. I see the whole thing.
Yeah, it's very reasonable.
All right. Any other questions for Dennis? All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Christine Weisman retaining wall collapse.
This is supposed to go...
Is Mrs. Weisman here?
Yeah, hi.
Oh, do you end them up?
Sure.
Hi, how are you today?
Doing good. So in April, the street cleaner came by my house and knocked my retaining wall down in the front of my house.
Okay.
And I took pictures and I sent them to somebody here in the office and they told me that it has to come before the board.
Okay.
My neighbor witnessed it. And I talked to Ryan, Mr. Ryan P., and he told me that another neighbor witnessed it and said it fell down all by itself. So I called that neighbor because she works here and she said she didn't tell him that.
Okay.
So I would just like my retaining wall repaired. I don't need a brand-new one. My husband's a musician. He's the music teacher at the elementary school. We don't know how to fix stuff like that.
Oh, your husband's Mark?
Yes.
He teaches all my kids and he's...
Oh, okay.
So I, okay.
Yeah, and so we just want it repaired so it looks nice. That's it.
Okay. But you didn't, you didn't see it happen?
No, but my neighbor did. His name is Randy Pierce.
Okay. And Mr. Pierce wasn't avail, Randy wasn't available today?
No, nope.
Would he be available some other day? It's just, because it's like, because you didn't see it happen and Randy, and Randy did, and so I, if the town...
I have before and after pictures and you can tell the road was clean. I left for work. My retaining wall was up. The street cleaner came by. And I have pictures where you can tell the street's been cleaned and then it's, it's down and he said he saw it. So nobody told me that I'd have to have that neighbor come in.
All right, and that's, then we can certainly continue this matter.
Okay.
I've seen, I've seen, I've seen some of those pictures also. And the picture I saw was that if, if this was the retaining wall, I saw sand and gravel here, which suggests to me that the street sweeper went past, went past the wall but didn't get up against it. And so I would, and that's why I'd like Randy to come here to say, "Did you see the street sweeper hit the wall and knock it over?" I'd like to understand what he saw that makes him think that the town is responsible. Because to my mind, the pictures show that the street sweeper went by, but I don't quite see the street sweeper hitting the wall. And since he, as he's the witness, I'd like his explanation.
I wish I had known that he needed to come in.
Okay, I'm, I'm...
I mean, back from April, I sent pictures and called. The front of my house looks terrible and I just want it fixed.
Okay, I understand. We are meeting next Thursday. Is...
I can ask him.
Could you invite, okay.
I have some other questions from what I saw.
And you're looking at the pictures?
Yeah. And I don't know if we could get answers to this. And I agree, it's unfortunate and, you know, we need to examine this. But my questions are, this being in the right, as we were just talking about trees and things in the right of way, is this considered in the right of way in the town? And was it permitted when it was built? Because I question if walls can be built this close to the road to begin with. So if it's repaired, is it being repaired next to the road even being appropriate if it's in the town right of way? Anyone know?
It was there when I bought my house, so I don't know.
But that doesn't mean it was permitted either.
Yeah, but was there 10 years? And if we haven't objected to it after 10 years, then we bought it. I'm not saying we bought it, but I'm saying from a standpoint of whether it's authorized to be there or not.
It's grandfathered.
Yeah, it's grandfathered. Like anything, whether it's permitted or not, is, yeah, is...
It's, that question's moot at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. And Christine, just, what I'm seeing here, this dirt and debris, it looks like the street sweeper came this close to your wall, but it looks like there's a one or two foot, I can't quite tell from the scale, gap between where the street sweeper was and your retaining wall. And that's, and so that makes me say, I want to talk to the person who told you this so that I can understand.
I see what you're saying, but it's not a coincidence that the street sweeper went by and now my thing is on the ground.
No, I understand. The street sweeper's a big piece of equipment and it brushes and it vibrates.
And like coming and putting it back, I mean, hammering it in, whatever. I just, I just want it like to look nice and now I have to wait another month. I'm not happy about it. Or another, I don't, I mean, what if he can't come?
So I'll make a motion that if, in the event that he can't attend the meeting, that you can designate somebody to meet with him at his availability.
I'm good. Would that be acceptable to you?
I didn't hear you.
She suggested that if Randy can't make it next Thursday, that the board appoint a single member to meet with him and discuss what he saw.
Sure, sure, that would be great.
Look at the pictures, maybe look at the site. And that way, we can get this done quickly. Thank you, Beth. That's a great idea.
Sure, that would be great. Thank you.
You need a second to that motion.
Second.
I'll do it.
Okay, so, so...
So you made that motion.
I made the motion to second it. So all in favor that we have...
Hey, hey, I'm in charge.
All right?
Hey, I'm in charge.
All right, you're in charge.
All right. All in favor of appointing someone if necessary, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then, do we need to vote to appoint someone or is that something just...
Yeah, you can't just autonomously make a choice because you're part of a board.
All right.
So I make a motion for Tom to visit.
Perfect. All right. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. So I'm sorry, what's the date for that?
What we'll do is, if you could, Kelly, you're gonna be out next week?
That's correct.
All right. Let's see.
Could you just give her your...
Give her your contract.
That's, that's just what I'm doing. Let me give you my email address and then you let me know if, whether Randy can make it next Thursday or not. And if he can't, then you and I will negotiate a time with, when he's available and then I can come by and look at it and talk to him and understand. And that way, we can...
Perfect.
That way, and we'll try and get that done.
Yeah, I mean, or he could have, could have, he written an email? Would that have been, I mean, we're still gonna go through with this. It's just like no one told me that he had to like come in or do anything. And could you write the time down, too, for the meeting? Thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Kelly.
Why delay this interaction? Why don't you just meet with him? And then you can deal with it on Thursday rather than waiting till Thursday, finding out he can't be here and then having it delayed another amount of time?
I like that idea. Do we need to move separately or can we do that under the existing motions?
We've already designated you as the board delegate.
This way, we won't be delayed any longer.
We have made you the delegate.
And the first time I wrote it, my penmanship is still not good. BrookfieldMA.us. All right. That's selectmember2@brookfieldma.us.
Gotcha.
All right.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so did she change it so you're gonna have...
The plan is I will go out and talk to you, I will go to your house, talk to you and Randy. We'll look it over, we'll look at the picture, we'll talk about what he saw. And then the board will, and then...
You can still invite him to come to the meeting, but if he can't, you've already got it covered.
Yeah, and then that way, and then, it's like, and then you are, and then the, well, on the agenda for next Thursday, we will, we will discuss this matter further.
Yep, I've got it in the notes. Add to the July 6th agenda.
That way, the board will have its chance to talk to Randy about what he saw. And we should have enough information to move forward. Of course, you're welcome to come. And it would be helpful if he could come. It's like, but it's not necessary. The meeting time will be, is like, is going to be 6:15 next Thursday on the 6th.
Okay.
Typically, the board, the normal meeting schedule is first and third Thursday of the month.
Okay.
And we're just catching up.
Okay. And yes, I'd just like to repeat that I don't want a brand-new anything. I just want to put back hammered, stapled, whatever construction words are used, just put it back. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I'd say I'd bring my duct tape. I don't think it's up to the job.
I don't know how to fix that, so...
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Christine.
I give emergency appointment alert. About issues in town, it's, you know, like one. Because it's, because of what I saw and the pictures I have of taxi fuel.
It's on the agenda.
He's pumping, he's pumping with a tanker that he's pumping off that. And one, two years ago, that, that the board turned him down not to do that and he's doing it anyway.
I'm, the select board, I don't, the select board turned him down. Do you have a...
The planning board.
Okay, so...
This is not on the agenda. Don't get sucked in.
So this is, so if the, if the planning board, if he is violating something the planning board told him to do, then this is something for the planning board to bring up. This is not under the authority of the select board, nor is it on the agenda for today's meeting.
But it's a safety board, select...
Then, then please, if...
Right.
If it is a safety issue, then I recommend you contact the state fire marshal and the state authorities if he's doing something unsafe. That is not, it's like if it is a safety issue, we are not the right people to do that. If you, if your, if your concern is that he's violating his permit, then the, then If you, if, if your concern is that he's violating his permit, then, then the planning board issued the special use permit, the planning board should be made aware of it so they can consider revoking it. If it's a safety matter, please contact the state fire marshal or the appropriate authority, I'm suggesting the state fire marshal, because I think that's who's appropriate, but I don't, but I'm not sure, but I would start with them, you could even, if you're concerned about this type of thing, you could probably just call the fire department, I'm sure Chief Martel would tell you who the right person at the state would be to handle that.
He's already done something submitted to the police department, and this incident, stuff like that, I just felt, I'm fooling myself, I took pictures of them transferring fuel from a tank, from three different vehicles, and it's, and what's gave them a permit too, before they...
The select board, it gave them a permit to store 110,000 gallons of propane on the property, and they didn't have a public carry room, they had it, they didn't go through the proper procedure.
This, excuse me, this is not on the agenda, if there is a safety, then bring it to the fire marshal, we cannot change that, are revoking, if we had the power to revoke his permit, that would not change something.
We can revoke his permit, the propane on the property.
I am not, I am not doing that, I am not qualified to determine if there is a safety issue there. Please bring it to someone who is qualified to determine there's a safety issue.
We brought it to everything in this town.
Did you just borrow the seating board to the party?
We brought it to the board of health, and we brought it to the, the planning board, we brought it to the zoning board of appeals, where else do you think that we're supposed to go?
The fire marshal, the state fire marshal.
And where was the...
And what did the state fire marshal tell you?
The fire marshal's supposed to go to our board of selectmen and our town committees, and that's what we have done.
For a, for a safety issue?
Yes. We think they had OSHA over there.
Then call OSHA, I can't...
They would shut them down if there was an issue.
Okay.
And what was the determinate, what was the determination?
You issued the permit allowing them, the board of selectmen issued the permit allowing them to keep the propane on the property at all.
This is not on the agenda, this is, this is...
It's an emergency port of...
The select board is not the right vehicle for revoking a permit if there is a safety issue. If there is a safety issue, the state, the regulatory authority is necessary to do that, and in their, and I would contact them, I am not going to get this board involved in that, because it, I am, I don't think anyone on this board is qualified for that.
You have, lots of people are not qualified that are doing things, but you know, that's getting over there.
Hmm? Thank you.
Okay, your office tells someone to issue a building permit with no plans at all.
Alright, this topic is over.
So, could you tell me again that you are not going to do anything about it?
Mrs. Washburn, you have brought up an issue that is one not on the agenda, you have brought up something you can, can claim is a public safety issue to the administrative head of the town, and I have said, this is not something we are going to consider today. You may bring this issue to the fire marshal, and any state regulatory agency who I think is much better positioned to deal with this than we are.
So you're saying that you will continue to let them have the permit to, to store the propane on the property, even though it's leaking out of the tankers?
If it's leaking, you need to call the fire department, they're gonna have to shut down.
If there is a leak, excuse me, if there is a leak, then, what evidence do you have that there is a leak, other, other than, you have said you smell propane, and my understanding from the hearings is that, is that, no, you may not right now, I'm in the middle of talking. You have said you smell propane, and I recall from the planning board hearings, that there was talk that there would be some propane tra, emission during transfer, when they hook and unhook. So until you can show me that there is an active leak, and not just say, oh, I smell a little propane, there must be a leak, until you can show me there's a leak, then I do not think there needs to be an action. You've just come here and said, I smell a little propane, can you please shut them down? That is what I am hearing. And therefore, and if you think there is a leak, call the fire marshal, call the state regulator of propane storage, they oversee such things, they are responsible for such things, this, the town is not responsible for determining those problems. My name is Tom Regan, I approve this message.
Can you tell me why?
No, I will not, this topic is over.
Why Mr. Blaze has been taken off of the agenda four times for coming to the board of selectmen on this matter?
I cannot tell you, because I was just elected chair, and I did not have authority for the agenda beforehand, and I am not, and I am not discussing this because it was not on the agenda. If Mr. Blaze would like something on the agenda, you may, I am happy to talk to you about this, and, and, and for...
He wasn't on the agenda.
Excuse me, if Mr. Blaze would like to be on the agenda for a future meeting, I am happy to talk to him about that, because I control the future meeting agendas as the chair. I cannot tell, I cannot talk to what was done by the prior chair, and fundamentally, it's less relevant. The point is that, if you have a matter you'd like to bring up, please bring it to me, and if I think it's relevant to the board, I will, I will, I will bring it up.
I was scheduled to be on this board, on this meeting, on the 29th.
I, I, I don't...
By, by, by the clerk of courts, you know, I was on the agenda, the 29th.
The clerk of courts, who is the clerk of courts?
Mike.
Oh, the, the town clerk?
Mike is the town clerk.
Mike, oh, town clerk? Mike, Mike does not control the agenda, I, you...
So I was not the agenda, I was not the agenda twice, and twice you removed me.
I, I did not remove you, I don't, I don't know why.
Your, your town administrator was on the agenda three times.
Okay. I can't talk to what happened in the past, please stick around and see me, or I will give you my email address, and we can, and my phone number, and we can discuss this about next week's meeting.
Are you in control, or the administrative control of your zoning officer?
Zoning officer is elected.
The zoning...
No, no, we, no, we control this.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, we are not talking about the zoning officer right now, if this matter comes up, it needs to be on the agenda so that people in this, excuse me, I am not done. If we are going to talk about something, open meeting law requires it to be on the agenda and posted 48 hours in advance, so that people who are interested may attend. We are not talking about the zoning enforcement officer, because it is not a posted agenda item, thank you. If you have a concern, you can discuss it with members of the select board directly outside meeting.
Who am I supposed to make the meeting with, so I'm not being canceled yet?
You may...
On the agenda after this morning, and was canceled this afternoon.
I never, I never saw him on any agenda.
I...
Ask, she's the one that scheduled the meeting, told him, and told him he was on the agenda.
County administrator.
So the town administrator was telling him that he has a meeting, he was scheduled for June 15th, they called him and canceled that meeting.
The meeting, yeah, the meeting June 15th was canceled, you can't, there's no one to meet with him.
Can't be in a meeting that's canceled.
And then he said, well, he'll be on the meeting for June 29th, what's today, June 29th?
Yes, okay, did anyone see, Mr. Blaze, did you see your name on the posted agenda of this meeting?
No, I haven't looked for it, I was, I just, I pushed it behind, and I was told it was on for 29th.
Alright, I, I can't tell you what happened, but you're not on the posted agenda, and by, I would violate open meeting law if I discussed, if I discussed your matter with you.
Who am I supposed to make the meeting with, and I canceled?
Please see me, after the meeting, I have to run this meeting.
Okay.
And then, after this meeting, or you can contact me, selectmember2@brookfieldma.us is my name, you have my name, and so, you can reach out to me that way, and we can talk, and we can start talking about it, about what you want to raise, about what you want discussed at meeting.
Okay.
Alright, I, I can't control what happened in the past, and you're not on the agenda, and so, as, I can't deny the rest of the town the opportunity to come out and talk about this topic, we can't talk about it behind the town's back.
So if I'm your pool two, you're gonna set up a meeting for us to talk?
I will, I, you can bring your concern to me, I will not promise that you will be on the agenda, I will... Well, you haven't told me what you want to talk about, so I can't promise you you'll be on the agenda.
I want to talk about my grievance against your zoning officer, who was not doing his job on my behalf.
Alright, then, well, then, then we, then I will talk to you about it, at some point, and if there is a matter that the board needs to attend to, I'll bring it up, but I am not, I am not promising you a hearing before the board, just because you say you have a beef with the zoning enforcement officer. Alright, I am going to qualify your concern, and if you don't like it, I am up for election next May.
The election doesn't got my wife, who, who was having some COD problems, because of all of the fuel being transferred, and all of the exhaust being run for hours and hours and hours, the board of health has been notified several times, but unfortunately, they, they, they're looking to do, because the zoning officer will not do his job.
Alright, well, I, I can't help you at this meeting.
Okay, then set up on the plane, and let's, let's, let's talk.
Okay.
Set it up.
What time?
Anytime, I'm, I'm on time, I'm on time.
Alright.
Anytime you want, any day, I'm available.
But I don't have your contact information, call, send...
You want my phone number, you can call me.
Give me, give me your phone number, we'll say, I will say, I'll call you tomorrow to set something up.
508...
Okay, hold on. Is it, is it, hold on, alright, 508... 6124, and is it Roland or Ronald?
Roland.
Roland, thank you, Roland Blaze?
Blaze.
B.L.A.I.S.
B.L.A.I.S.
Okay.
Would you like, would you like some heads up, I have some heads up for you.
Um, I won't say no, but I'm not gonna read it until later.
This is my grievance to you, asking you to confront your, your zoning officer, and get your job done.
Alright, thank you.
And you're gonna call me up later?
I will call you tomorrow, work is, work, work is busy, uh, let's see.
Give me a chance, because I'm on time, I'm on time.
No, I know, I know, it's like, I know, do you get up early, or do you stay up late?
I'm up early, I'm up at 5 o'clock.
Ah, God, oh, God.
I'm leaving at 7, I turn to the public at 7 o'clock.
Alright, that's, that's fine, I, I will give you, I will give you a call between 8 and 9 o'clock.
In the morning?
In, yes, in the morning.
Okay.
No, I'm not gonna try and catch you when you're asleep.
Next tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna be expecting your home call.
Alright. Alright, agenda item number eight, sign VEDAR contract.
No, number nine, sign the contract.
Nine? Oh, wait, ah, yep, yep, thank you, I, I got folded down, number nine's, I had the right item, but yes, nine, sign the VEDAR contract.
This is the contract for all the software for mining departments.
Kelly, is it the same contract as last year?
I didn't see last year, so I can't answer that question, but their, the services that they're providing are the same between now and then.
Alright, let's see, is it a three-year contract, or?
Do you want to check that?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering why the, what is the term of the, what was the term of the last contract that just expired?
Three years.
Three, okay, that's, that's why it's not on your radar, I thought it was an annual contract, that's why I thought you would've seen it. So same services, more price?
Nothing.
Yes, okay, because they're, I'm sure their rates went up a little, and we're probably asking for a little more than we did in the past?
No.
Oh, no, we're, 24 is gonna be the same services, we added something in 23, right? You, didn't, we added a seat in VEDAR?
We, we added, no, we didn't.
Okay.
No, we didn't.
Alright.
We had a certain number of access points, one was dropped, and then it was added back in, so it's basically...
Okay, no net change. And where does it say the amount? Oh, there we go. Alright, that number looks, that number is, looks to be the number that was in our budget discussions, when you put, yep. Alright, could I get a motion to approve the contract, and then we can have any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on the VEDAR contract?
Nope.
Alright, all in favor of signing the VEDAR contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is, Kelly, is that something that I should sign, or there's only one signature line, or is that something you can sign?
Well, if you ask me to, I can.
Kelly, would you sign it, please?
Sure.
Alright, do you have your own copy, or?
No.
I have an unnumbered agenda item, agreement Leicester Health Services?
No.
No, okay.
That's still part of this, we have to do the police...
Oh, oh, that's, that's, oh, that's, that's part of the contracts we need to sign.
Extension of the intermunicipal agreement with Leicester Health.
Okay. And I think these, are these all in different, um...
What's that?
I don't have that in front of me.
It's not half of our piles.
As I say, I, I don't... I don't have those contracts in my packet.
You don't have the police chief contract?
No, the only other, in the, in the packet for contract signing, I have the tree contract, and that's it. I have two copies of the tree contract.
No, I don't see it. They have all the correspondence.
Great, it didn't go to any court. The contract is exactly as you agreed, in previous negotiations with the police chief that's up in my office, so it was emailed to you all.
I reviewed it.
For review, and I heard back from the chief today, and he was okay with it, he wanted one change, which was...
Can you say the change?
Yeah, the change that he wanted was, he didn't want it to say subject to town meeting board, he wanted it to say subject to appropriations, which is basically the same thing.
The same thing.
So, it's, it's, I don't see an issue with the change, so the change was made...
It's a functionality neutral language change.
Yes, it is. So if you would like to approve that, the last supplier, it should be...
You, you sent us a copy.
I did.
Yeah, that's, I thought I saw, that's what I thought I saw in here.
Yeah, I saw the online copy.
Actually...
I had it up a little while ago.
So if you want to make a motion to approve it, and then discuss it, or however you want to do this?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as previously, or with the, with the amended verbiage relative to the appropriations.
Second. Alright, any discussion? I think we've been over this enough.
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor of approving the police chief's contract as amended, say aye.
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 Okay, so there's an intermunicipal agreement with Leicester, it is, I was brought a sheet from the American Senator with Leicester, asking that they get an extension, and they asked for the board to sign for extension. This is, this is the one that provides the health services and all of the other things that are outsourced, both need help for different functions the board of health does.
Let's see, we've got board of health here, was there any input required? Looks like they've already approved it.
Is it just taking the existing agreement and extending the term?
Yes.
Okay, and is there any cost to the town?
No.
Alright.
You have a motion to approve the, the extension?
It's so that they get grant funding.
For the agreement with the, what's that, let me just get the full title on that, so, so I'll make a motion to approve the extension for the current intermunicipality agreement with Leicester, in support of the continuation of this grant program.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, see, as there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we not sign this?
No, you do not.
No.
Didn't tell us any?
No.
No, there's no...
No, you have to sign, yeah, just, he signs right below Maureen.
Oh, I got you.
Alright, were those, Kelly, were those the three contracts we needed signed? Or is there a fourth one in there?
There was a fourth one, but it didn't hit the agenda, because I didn't hear from Mr. Russell until today.
Okay.
It was put in the folder, because I thought it was put in the police chief's.
Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, that brings us to agenda item 10, resignation veterans agent.
So you have his resignation, he's given us plenty of notice, he shares services with, our veterans agent covers the territory of Brookfield, West Brookfield, and Warren. I met with the town administrator, Warren, and West Brookfield, but we're coordinating our efforts on hiring a new veterans agent for the three towns. Mr. Lapine recommended somebody, that person is not interested in the job.
Oh, really?
Warren has very, we did get another recommendation, and she's extremely qualified, but we have posting requirements, so the job needs to be, needs to be posted. And Warren is very stringent posting requirement, so we're gonna try and work around that. What we would like to do is have the three town administrators, and Warren has a veteran board representative from their board, to post it.
Jointly?
Yeah.
As like a regional?
We're gonna post it jointly, listing each stipend for each town, and what, how many current recipients we have, for each town. The applications are gonna go to the West Brookfield town administrator, then we're all gonna review them, and, and, West Brookfield has the authority, the town administrator has the authority to hire, so he's gonna make his decision jointly with us, and we're gonna bring our recommendation, I'm gonna bring the recommendation to this board, and the Warren town administrator's gonna bring it to his board. So if you are agreeable to that, that is how we will handle the replacement of veterans in the town.
Makes sense.
Alright, so...
Do you have a concern?
So, I guess, first of all, I'll motion to, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Lapine with, you know, our regrets, and support the current town administrator plan for appropriate posting and coordination of a new candidate.
Second. Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He certainly did give us plenty of notice.
Yeah.
So...
Alright, agenda item 11, police station building insulation.
That one's fun.
Yes, so, um, not if it's on, it's not on the agenda, and I'd rather you not.
I just, I just, I just want to remind you, I have to get my 860 to make the call on Warren.
Oh, okay, so, when will you be back?
I'll be back by 9 o'clock.
Alright, I will call you between 9 and 10.
9 and 10 is good, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Alright.
Who seconded the motion for the veterans?
Brad did.
Okay, well, I have to select, and probably be aware of this issue, if you'd like to[1780.12] Okay, well, I have just left and I probably am aware of this issue. Would you like to address that or would you like me to explain?
Brad, have you seen it?
Yeah, so.
Then why don't you go, because I've only heard it described.
So the chief in his office had noticed the drop ceiling was sagging. And when he went to go investigate it, he noticed that the insulation was coming down onto the drop ceiling. He, I don't know what the actual timeline of events were, but he did talk to an insulation company who noticed some issues with the way the insulation was installed. I've dealt with insulation and, uh, the issue is, is it's loose bone cellulose stapled in with plastic holding it up. And the problem you get over time is those staples start to give way, which is occurring. And the insulation is coming down and.
Is it an open trust ceiling?
Yes.
And so it's wide open all the way up, we're not individual. Do you know if the grading is done per by the roof? Because there needs to be grading up there to hold the drop ceiling.
I did not see any grading, which was my concern.
What's holding the door?
Plastic and staples.
No, no, no.
No, there's grading.
Oh.
That grate that, that drops.
Yeah, that's there.
Yeah.
What is, what is that attached to?
Those are wi, those are wired up to the rafters.
To the rafters?
I mean, I would assume that's how it is. That's how you do it. So all that ceiling system is, in overtime, loose bone cellulose collects moisture, it gets heavy. So we got a problem.
And then, in the department meeting today, the chief said that the, um, the insulation's been removed from over his office and the booking area, which, um, means that in the winter, there'll be a lot of heat going up to the roof and causing melting up there. And so the roads will be cold and the roof will be melting and ice damage.
It's caused condensation inside the attic, which will in turn make the, the insulation heavier.
Yep.
Which will in turn decrease the insulation value, which will in turn cause mold problems and the entire ceiling will come down.
And ice dance.
So something that needs to be taken care of sooner rather than later.
So is this too many years past building?
Yeah, it's, I believe the building's 10 years old. Yeah, you, you called the builder, didn't you?
So we can't do it.
I did not.
Oh, oh, chief did.
So we can't do anything at this point with the builder.
There's no warranty on this. This just needs to be fixed.
Well, I mean.
I know there's no warranty.
Yeah, but.
Did they actually meet the specification?
Right, that's what I'd be interested in.
Need to talk to your building inspector about, because that shows the inspector.
I would be interested in seeing that from the building inspector and how it was signed off and if it was deemed appropriate at that time.
Going backwards, isn't going to fix this?
No, I know.
Your finger is not going to fix it, so. I can tell you that it wasn't inspected. I was on the booking committee. They built that building. It wasn't inspected by the booking inspector. It, it failed just by spec. They didn't build it.
Okay, so.
So that's probably code back then.
Well, that's what I said. It could have been code back then.
It's not, it was back then, but it was, and it wasn't inspected by the booking inspector and it couldn't be fast.
Good, that's, that's excellent information.
So it sounds like we have no grounds there, so we're going to have to just.
So what are, what are, what are our options? Like what funding sources do we have?
I believe that we, we funded one of the, was, what was going to be an ARPA article with a town free cash article. So we have a little bit of ARPA money left. So I need to look at that with, um, the town accountant and see what we have left and what we have earmarked. So there may be funding there.
In the meantime, do we, we should probably start looking into what it's going to take to repair that in parallel with looking at how we're going to fund the, fund the repairs.
And at some point, we're going to have a special town meeting towards the end of the year. Could you then, at that special town meeting?
That is all contingent on, it's too early to know.
No, but I mean, if you did, could you then add that as a warrant for that special?
We could. We have free cash left over, so we can, oh, no, we won't be able to use free cash after tomorrow. We have to be certified. So if it's recertified by then.
Yeah. So what do we need is, do we need a motion to?
We need to get this fixed before it gets.
Before winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's, uh, so functionally, what do we need? A motion to, um, at least obtain a quote relative to the insulation repairs?
I'd say we need to authorize investigation and quote gaining, getting quotes for our options for fixing this.
Typically, whose responsibility would it be to, to go out and do this fundamentally?
Well, under the.
We don't have a building committee or anything.
Under the statute, the police chief is under complete control of his own building. I don't know if he would have a suggestion as to how we would like to proceed with this, but it is his building, so he is the one responsible for this. Not, not the damage, of course, but he's, has the authority to get this fixed.
Yeah, he's, he's responsible for dealing with it.
Sorry. This is out of your authority because it's a police station. Once he occupies it, he has complete control of the building.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Like the library trustees have complete control of the library.
Right. Is this something that we could, um, is there anyone, we could ask if he would like some help?
Together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So why don't we, we?
Get asked the town hall, booking committee, they have a resource.
That's, that's, I was thinking, I was wondering if they were the right one to tap also.
Yeah, in, in order to provide him some support with some folks that have experience in getting these type of contractors on board.
Mm-hmm.
Connections in the community, so, um. So what do you want in terms of your motion?
I would say that we, I'm thinking we want to authorize the chief to investigate, um, options and, uh, and get estimates for what, what he thinks needs to be done to deal with this. And that we ask the town hall improvement committee to nominate one or two people to, um, assist the chief as needed in evaluating the situation and identifying paths forward. Does that sound good? Or did I miss something?
Uh, let me just try to make that fewer words, so, um, can we get a, um, so I make a motion that, um, that we provide support to the police chief and give him the go-ahead to, um, uh, explore his building repair options for this insulation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with a request to the, um, town hall improvement committee to support him as needed with their skill set.
So moved, or second.
All right, all right, any further discussion? All right, seeing as none, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Agenda Item Number 12, end of year transfers.
Pause.
Damn, hey, people.
And we have two transfers.
No, you have four.
We have four.
Which ones do you have?
I have, um, accountant expense to audit and treasurer clerk wages to a couple of different ones. I think I have one signed by Lori and one, can't read the signature.
I've got treasure.
Oh, I think it's Amy.
Expense for.
I don't have one with treasure expense.
Hold on a second. This one's for highway. Uh, this is from the PD and this is for the water department. You don't have any of these?
I don't have any of those.
Add these to your plan.
All right. That's, I have this one. I have the one treasurer clerk wages, um, going over a couple of others. The other is, um, new. Okay.
Pop that extra one on the floor. Thank you.
Just so it doesn't get.
And now we don't have to worry about it getting.
Mixed in?
Mixed in.
All right, the first transfer is from the accountant expense account to the audit account, $1,000, due to increase in price, um, after budget for, um, after the, the budget was approved last year. So I'll take, I'll take a motion to, uh, to approve, approve this.
So moved. Do you want to just read them all or?
Yeah, just read them all.
Okay, okay, yep, okay. Number two is, uh, I have, uh, three transfers, all from treasurer clerk wages. One to tax title, $2,000. One to expenses, I believe that's, yeah, that's treasure expenses for $250. And one to payroll services for $250. Um, reason, auction costs, postage increases, and more paychecks. The, uh, third transfer is from both, uh, there are two transfers on this form. Both are from the water department expense account. One is to the water department clerk wages account for $5.12. And the second one is to the water department second, secondary operator wages account for $660.38. The, uh, fourth transfer, um, both are from police wages full-time. Uh, one goes to police wages full-time overtime, that's $36,500. And the other one is to police department clerk, $1. Uh, fifth and final transfer is from. Kelly, it just says from expense to utilities.
Tell me what they count as a risk.
Uh, it's 011422.
Highway department.
Okay, thank you. Let's talk to Ryan about getting the department. He knows, he knows it's his department, we don't. That's a, all right, and the reason is the increased cost of natural gas. That's, yeah, that's not a surprise. Okay, so those are the five transfers. Are there any, uh, so let's get, let's get these, uh, motioned for discussion and then we can figure them out.
I'll give you a motion to, uh, discuss the, uh, end of year transfers.
Okay. Aren't they all end of year transfers?
You asked for that motion.
You asked for it.
Yeah, okay, yep, all right.
I gave you the motion you asked for.
Thank you, I just, I, I, end of year threw me off. Okay, Brad?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion about these? No.
No, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard practice. I mean, it looks like we're just doing a typical end of year transfers.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
None of them stand out as being significant under or over budget fundamentally.
Mm-hmm. All right, uh, seeing as there's no further discussion, um, all in favor of approving all transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Beth, did you?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right.
We already did Officer Panero with the, with the other appointments, which took full-time officer to under the license and on the separate.
Yeah, that's true. We already did that. Probably because it came in as correspondence.
All right, so, all right, I'll sign these before the end of the meeting. Uh, let's see, appointment. All right, uh, Mr. Panero has been appointed and did we, did we appoint, um, Candice?
She wasn't on, Candice was not on the list because she was recently, um.
Accused.
Monday, yeah, so this was added to the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, and the, uh, the, uh, this is the conservation commission, um, recommending that we appoint her?
Yes, it's a conservation recommended that, that she be appointed and now their board is pulled out of the seventy minute.
Good.
Standing.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Motion to, uh, appoint Candice Bombard, is it for a period of three years?
I believe so.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, no, we do you yearly.
Concoms yearly, okay, so, uh, through, uh, June 30th, 2024.
Mm-hmm. Second, all right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have your minutes.
All right, all right, so Kelly, I've got. There's just an agenda item fiscal year '24 appointments?
Outside of the. You just did those.
Okay.
You just remember so that Brad could sign them while.
Oh, that's right, that's right, there we go, that's, my, my bad. All right, select board minutes.
These are all emailed to, I believe.
Yes, I thought I, I thought I saw a physical copy, but.
Motion to approve, uh, the minutes for 512, 61, and 66, uh, as previously, uh, provided electronically.
Second, all right, and, uh, Kelly, the, um, the 6623 is, has an executive session, set of minutes, the other two don't?
You have the menu folder.
I do, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a different color.
Oh, there we go, the green, the green one, I knew I saw them. Thank you, May 12, June 1, June 6, June 6, yep, okay, thank you, answer my question. I have my motion and second, right? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we acknowledged the monthly police report. All right, uh.
Would you mind passing that around?
Uh, not at all, it's.
They didn't, they didn't send a new document?
I didn't see a copy. I looked for it earlier, I didn't see it.
Looks like he's got a list of, um, callouts or calls he had to respond to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I do something specific I'm looking for, I think, that's all. See something about the format of what they, what he's given from dispatch. Is there a way that we could request that this, because I know there's a, um, this is an analysis by call reasons. And we find out if what other, um, what, what other formats this can be provided in. The one I'm specifically interested in is call out by like time of day, if they have that.
Give them what's called.
It doesn't, no, I didn't think it did. It's by type rather than, um, by timing or day.
Was there someone that we could talk to in regards to that? Like the reports, like from dispatch? I could talk to.
Well, yeah, well, that's, talk to the chief because I think they can run, I think they can run this report by a whole, like their standard software, they can run it by a whole bunch of different things.
Interesting things I'd like to see.
Yeah, exactly. So if, if, uh, we make a motion to just request, I'd like to request that and see what, what options we have from the Braintree Dispatch for the format on that. Want a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor for, uh, placing that request to the Braintree Dispatch?
Aye.
Aye. You're the chief.
Can you, can Brad do it?
Yeah, sure.
Will you just send?
No, because, no, because there's other things I'd want to see.
All right, and then, do we need a motion to acknowledge the report?
Yeah.
All right, just review it. All right, that brings us to the last item on the agenda, executive session under exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, um, I do so declare. So could I get a motion to go?
You have a motion to, uh, enter executive session under exemption three, um, and not, and to, um, to adjourn out of the executive session.
To adjourn the meeting directly out of executive session without open meeting afterwards.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Pafflin, uh.
Yeah, this is a roll call vote.
Pafflin, aye.
Kelski, aye.
Regan, aye.
Do you appoint a board before you adjourn? Okay, you do something with your kids who say you got the hot and the cold and the cold and the hot. I mean, how long's that going to be? Does anybody notice these things?
Talk to you.
Did you know?
Yeah, I had meat and skin, that's how we fix them.
I mean, I know I'm kind of like that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
We'll see. I hope they're at least clearly coded red and blue, so that when someone reaches the right hand, they notice it, they can at least notice it's red and slow down.
Thing from New Braintree.
What?
Dispatch report.
Yeah. But if, but if it's, but if it's hot from the last person, there's, there's a risk. I know. Just, just do what I do, because my kids would always run the hot.